Welcome everyone, it's 6:30 on the 10th of November, so I think it's time to get going. I don't think we have any fire alarms due tonight. Dr. Ra, please make way to the nearest exit. Can we have a record of the apologies?
Thank you Chair, and your apologies trust is received from councillor Murphy and councillor Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any disclosures of interest tonight? Councillor Todd.
Yes, I'm declaring personal or judicial interest as a candidate.
Thank you. I suppose I should probably declare that my son attends to be in school, which I think has been consulted for the new playground. So he enjoyed very much a session with Mrs. Lord, so I'd just like to record that as well. And councillor Cooper.
Led by you councillor Becker, I'd rather do the same thing, declare an issue for Simpies' son as well, who also heard about the consultation. But I think he and I weren't consulted, but I think that's probably a good idea because that could have got chaotic.
That had to be.
Thank you. Chief person's announcements this evening. We start off with a briefing note for the town forum regarding the River Park pitch. This is just to update the town forum members about issues that have arisen with the 3G pitch at River Park since the council took ownership in April 2021. Since that time, there have been numerous antisocial behaviour incidents. There's been trespass, there's been disabling the electrical systems, damage to the gates, damage to the fencing, damage to the surface of the pitch itself. We have been reporting each incident via one-on-one officers have reported. But I think it's fair to say that those people who have been gaining entry illegally have been extremely rude, threatening to both officers and police officers who have attended. So it's now to a point where we really need to look at doing something about it. The average number of people gaining access is 15, sometimes it's higher. Most of them are minors, some adults have been seen. You'll see all councillors should have a paper in front of them that was circulated this afternoon summarising these issues. So short term, our immediate needs are to address that antisocial behaviour. Safeguard officers, users and others at River Park respond to instances of vandalism. Long term, we need to replace the existing fencing, replace and upgrade the floodlights, and there may need to be some vegetation clearance. Just to clarify the numbers there, you'll note don't add up to £98,000, they add up to £99,000. Andrew Moore is here tonight to answer questions on this paper if anyone has any. Councillor Scott.
Thank you Chair, just the mechanics of just the practicalities. Now, the leisure centre is closed there. The booking used to be done just inside the door while the team on the desk is just... If Andy could speak about what were the mechanics of how people would book and who keeps a mind on that. Obviously, we've got the tennis club there, but it'd be good to know from Andy just the technique and mechanism of how that goes now. We've got their building excellent.
Mr. Moore. Thank you Chair. Yes, the management of the pitch and the tennis court is all now taken by council offices. It's an online system and it can be done telephonic if needed to reach local on the communication floor. On a whole, it's an online system where people will make the booking themselves. They are given a unique booking code. So when they get to the facility, they can give the code into the gate which says... And then this code only works at the time of booking, so it's not a case of being able to be in any time of system. They are paid with... The facilities are maintained by contractors. We've obviously other sports pitches and various instances of work. And yes, the tennis pitch is based on site if you can ever see a lot of days there. All times avoidy, but yeah, we're just helping around on site.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Tidencup.
Just to say as well Chair, that I really do welcome this paper. This is very close to me and in fact I should be there tonight playing football in fact, is what I usually do on Wednesday evening. So I can actually attest that the problems in terms of things like litter and things like that are a real problem. And so it's very welcome that this is the plan. I was just wondering in terms of the fencing design and the replacement of it as proposed here, do you have any idea what that could look like if it's any different from what we've got now? That would actually deter illegal access.
Mr. Moore. Thank you Chair. Yes, from the soft market we're going to go on so far just to see what is out there. Some of the designs have come back with the lean over arms, which would deter climbing, like more so than is now. The actual fence itself is come on quite far, but since the technology has been 20 years old by now. Actually, they're now seeing the type of fences changed. It's more difficult to climb, it's more robust. And the addition of the lean arm would require them to all climb back on themselves to get over. So I like to think that that would be more of a deterrent.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson. And again, thank you very much for this report. Obviously, this is a considerable amount of money and I just wondered how we were expecting to be funded with many views on this. Mr. Moore.
Thank you Chair. Let us bring the brief announcements and I would please bring this attention of town forum members who'd love to return January missing the full paper. I think we're going to beat maintenance requirements with a need and more consideration of funding options. So yeah, that's a good recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Tidencup.
Just a quick follow up for me. In that paper, Mr. Moore, we're really good if there was possibility of getting some sense of what other potential revenue streams become in relation to those football pitches, whether let's go to engage with local football clubs, Southampton Football Foundation for example, maybe help to assist us in getting more utilisation out of those pitches. Because if they're used more, I suspect they'll be better preserved as well. So it'd be good to see if we can actually increase the use of it lawfully and therefore get revenue up to, as councillor Ferguson rightly says, cover this by extensive but reasonable cost. Because it is a really popular facility, I'm pleased to say. So it's good that it's been looked after in this way.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll look forward to the paper in January. Thank you, Mr. Moore. The other matter of in chairman's announcement that I would like to make relates to the... Members may be aware that there is a petition currently circulating seeking a Lido for Paul Winchester at the site of the River Park Leisure Centre. We are aware of the petition, we have met with the authors of that petition. And while we love the idea of outdoor swimming, and we understand the benefits of outdoor swimming, there are obviously with the announcement about the proposal for River Park Leisure Centre, there are other issues that we need to consider. So we have offered, just to update members, we have offered the support of town forum members to assist the Lido petitioners in their quest for outdoor swimming generally within the town. And we will be working with them. So if anyone would like to volunteer to be on that working group with me, please let me know after the meeting. So that brings us on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Are they agreed or are they lovely? In public participation, we have... I'm very pleased to say that we've got lots of people here today. Got Janet Berry, I can see here. Jen Vicki Bolton also here. Emma Beck also present to the candidate for, and Rachel Lemon. So lovely to have you all here. What I understand is, Mrs. Berry and Mrs. Bolton, you would like to speak now. And Mrs. Beck and Mrs. Lemon, you would like to speak in relation to the park plan paper. Is that correct? Yeah. And Mrs. Berry, would you like to speak first?
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the High Cliff Forum for Community Action. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Bar End Depot site and to draw your attention to the petition about it submitted to the council with 350 signatures from the local community in High Cliff, Bar End and St Giles Hill. As you know, the depot site has been deemed to be surplus to requirements and cabinet have agreed to dispose of it. The petition requests that the council carry out an adequately funded and inclusive community engagement exercise to determine the potential of the Bar End Depot site to provide facilities for the local community and that this should be carried out before any further action is taken on setting the site. It should include discussion around the provision of a food store, housing and other community facilities, including activities and amenities identified in the High Cliff community plan. Residents in High Cliff, Bar End, Chilcombe Lane, St Giles Hill and the Wolf Hill area should all be involved. It should identify any gaps in local needs and aspirations as well as any kind of development would be unacceptable. The council should honour the results as an exciting opportunity to put into practice the vision for local communities in the town halls as identified in the Winchester Vision 2020 to 30 adopted by the Winchester Town Forum in January 2021. Local people are very aware that this is the only major piece of land remaining undeveloped in a neighbourhood that lacks essential services and amenities and is served by limited public transport. As such, it could be seen as the final chance to provide facilities that could potentially transform the neighbourhood. The last in-depth consultation with local residents about potential uses for this site took place nearly 20 years ago in 2002 with the John Thompson and Partners Community Engagement Exercise in High Cliff, investigating the potential to provide new ballroom combs and community benefits in the area. In the more recent consultations over the new leisure centre culminating in the Bar End Design Framework in 2018, discussion was directed to fundamental design features such as height restrictions of buildings, not specific uses of the site. A new community engagement exercise, looking at the potential of the site, would be very different to commenting on the developer's detailed scheme. It would ensure the involvement and ownership of local residents from the start. It would take advantage of their knowledge and their enthusiasm to be fully involved. It would enable new ideas to come forward accounting for the impact of Covid-19. It would provide an opportunity to empower the local community and build its resilience, embracing the approaches identified in the new Winchester vision such as the 15-minute city model, the co-created city and the auditing of resources to look at existing provision and addressing balances. I do hope that this is able to be considered in order to ensure that viable options for this site are explored, which cabinet have the best scheme to serve this local community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone want to respond? Councillor Murray.
Thank you Chairman. I'm speaking now, not as a member of the town forum, but as the cabinet member for housing and asset management, responsible for the Bar End Depot site. Certainly, as the cabinet member responsible, I'm really keen to bring forward this site in a way which does maximise the community benefit. In particular, we're really keen to have that food store on site, which we recognise is something that the community are really keen on, which fits in with the Bar End Design Framework and also works with the new leisure centre. Those are quite, that's a pretty high list of requirements that we're working to. I'm keen to talk to Mrs. Berry and other members of the High Cliff Forum about how we can best move that forward in a practical way. And I am talking to her later this week on this subject.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Bolton, did you like to speak now?
Thank you Chair, thank you town forum for having me. I'm not speaking for an organised group, but I'm speaking as a wild swimmer. I wanted to talk about the park plan. And if you take away anything, I would like you to take away two thoughts. One thought about evidence and one thought about access. As far as evidence goes, there's no good evidence to block wild swimming at River Park. I understand that there is some bank erosion, but that isn't the reason to end a historic access to the river. I understand that the park plan also includes paddling in the currently silted up centre channel. And I think that's excellent access to wild water for kids. But that isn't the purpose that the current wild swimming spot in River Park serves right now. There's also no evidence that wild swimming will remain at pandemic levels. So during the pandemic, Winchester had no leisure centre, no swimming pool. Everyone's swimming pools were closed and there was a lot of wild swimming taking place in River Park. And I can understand why Hampshire Wild Wildlife Council might have been concerned about that. But there's no evidence that that is going to continue or that it's something that we need to make up new rules about. Secondly, access, there's very little access to river water for swimming and bathing in Hampshire at all. It's what makes River Park so incredibly special. It's somewhere that anyone, any member of the public can come to and get into the water and splash around and swim. Most river access along the itchiness in private hands and it's not possible to get in and out. I was very happy to hear the Chair say that the benefits of outdoor swimming are recognised. This is an opportunity that we already have and it would be a real shame to plant up the banks so that people can't get in and out. As far as access to the natural world goes, wild swimmers are very aware of the importance of wildlife. It's one of the reasons that they love to swim. They're accessing the natural world just the same way that people who are walking are accessing the natural world. They certainly never intend to do any harm, although I understand that through weight of numbers sometimes erosion takes place. But as I said, I don't think there's any evidence that weight of numbers is going to continue at pandemic levels. And I think wild swimmers are a huge force for good. They're certainly campaigning for cleaner water, for bathing quality water. And bathing quality water is also wildlife quality water. So if we want to look at cutting sewage outflow and runoff into our rivers, I think wild swimmers are a valuable ally, a valuable resource in helping that happen. So as I said, I think the three points that I'd like you to take away. One is before you block access, think about the evidence. Many thanks for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Anyone want to respond? Mrs. Croke, just smile at me. I'm actually going to hand over this one to me. That's what I was going to do. The two seasons. Yeah, sorry, just debating or not. Yes, this page of the park plan, it does still show the river historic swimming access on the plan. And we've got no intention to physically or otherwise to block that. However, we do have to consider the ecological impact that has, as we will be doing in the work, completing a full ecological impact survey on that area of the river. They're also have to balance it with concerns of the nature reserve and the wildlife council on that side. We're actually working with them, in particular looking at signage and accessibility and the impact, making sure it's, you know, bank erosion things that they have talked about. That was on our side as opposed to people getting out onto the nature reserve side. So that's something we're going to be looking at before we can make a full decision either way. Of course, it requires a bit of investigation. Lovely, thank you very much. And thank you both for coming along tonight. That brings us to our first official paper relating to the four funding grants programme for 2022-2025. Now, that's Metcher, yes, the other fellow is in the room tonight to present. Oh, councillor Redcliffe is presenting this paper, I'm very sorry, I didn't know that. Councillor Redcliffe.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for listening, being here on hand to answer any questions as well. Winchester has a vibrant flourishing voluntary sector, includes many groups and organisations providing support to our most vulnerable residents as well as others that are working to preserve and protect our heritage, our environment and support cultural activity. And the town forum provides funding to the voluntary sector through several different funding mechanisms. We have our small grants programme, which provides grants of up to £500, the one-off expenses. We have a crowdfunding scheme that matches the value of funding raised through crowdfunding, up to a maximum of £4,000 per organisation. And finally, we have this multi-year core funding programme, which makes core funding available for a handful of organisations that play an important role in the life of our community, in line with the council's strategic priorities. The paper before you relates to that third category of support, that is core funding. And it's provided through the council's Strategic and Priorities and Outcomes Fund. Current funding cycle finishes in March 2022 and we've taken the opportunity to review and refresh the fund's operation priorities and to make recommendations about the continuation of support to two specific organisations, Citizens Advice and Play to the Crowd. Both of these organisations are making a vital community contribution in the town area and right across the district. Their work fits well with the council's priorities set out in the current council plan. Citizens Advice provides free, independent, confidential, high-quality advice to local people on their rights and responsibilities. The town forum currently contributes £20,000 a year and we are recommending that this support be maintained for further three years ending March 2025. Play to the Crowd provides a commercial arts programme as well as the Playmakers' Community Engagement Scheme and the Hat Fair, which engages and entertains residents from across the district. Again, the town forum is currently providing £20,000 a year and we're recommending that that be continued for a further three years ending March 2025. Both Citizens Advice and Play to the Crowd have had to adapt their delivery model during the pandemic and have worked to improve its services in spite of the challenges created by Covid. As per the report before you, I don't know what's happened to my microphone, but we are asking the town forum to acknowledge the achievements and the success of the strategic fund over the last three years, to note the proposed set of principles, criteria and funding priorities and outcomes going forward, and finally to continue with the three-year arrangements provided to Citizens Advice and Play to the Crowd for the period of April 2022 to March 2025. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. So am I like laying up? So we have three recommendations for this paper that we note the achievements and successes of the current fund over the last three years, the intention to continue with the three-year agreement associated with strategic grants for the period 2223, 2425, proposed set of principles set out in appendix one, and that we approve the continued support of Citizens Advice and Play to the Crowd with annual contributions each of £20,000 and approve in principle further grants for the two-year period 2023, 2024 and 2024, 25, £20,000 each to Citizens Advice and Play to the Crowd. And that those awards are subject to a satisfactory annual financial review and that we delegate authority to the corporate head of economy and community to release the grant allocations and installments based on performance data provided during those financial years. Do we have any questions on this paper? Any debate? Is it agreed? Lovely, agreed, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Metcher, for being here tonight, thank you very much for the paper and actually all of the work that you do on the grants, because they do make such a big difference to the town. Thank you councillor Redcliffe. So we move on to item seven, the town account, medium-term financial position. Mr. Kennedy, you're not the last tonight. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much Chair. Yes, so the paper you have in front of you is essentially an update paper on the 2223 budget process. The town informal accounts group have met in October to consider options and priorities for the budget process. The result of these discussions and input from tonight and a further meeting of the informal accounts group will produce a final budget recommendation paper in January, where the budget, including the town precept, will be recommended to cabinet in February for final approval. So within this paper, essentially, the key elements this year are the vision for Winchester 2030, which has come to the town forum as a separate paper. And within that paper, there are ambitious plans to help shape the future of the city over the next 10 years. Not all of the elements of these plans will require financial contributions, but it's clear that resources will be required and that options will come forward as a result of that plan over the next few years. The informal accounts group also discussed the commitment of the town to the development of high-quality sports provision. There's obviously two major sports building projects planned at Northmore's and KGB. Both of these projects are going to require capital and ongoing revenue resources and financial projections will come forward to support those projects in due course too. And so therefore, with that in mind, a proposal has been made for a growth bid of £20,000 commencing in 2223. And that's seen as an initial growth bid, bearing in mind the aspirations and bearing in mind the need to move forward with some of the quick wins that no doubt will be able to be achieved. So this budget's been put forward in order to enable some progress to be made commencing from 2223 and have that within the scope of the budget in order to proceed. And fees and charges are due in an overall paper to cabinet this month. And in line with the overall review, it's recommended that the majority of the fees for cemeteries and sports pitches, open spaces etc are increased by 3% for 2223, which is obviously slightly below the current inflation level. And inflation is forecast to rise further over the coming months and into next year. In terms of the financial projections, so shown in appendix A, so currently those... so currently those include the growth proposal of £20,000, that's within that. The precepts is not, well, is shown the current levels at the moment, and proposals will come forward in January for recommendations as to what the precepts should be recommended for next year. In terms of the town reserve, which is one of the main sources of funding, obviously for the town, a one-off expenditure of both capital and revenue, that does achieve the 10% medium-term financial strategy target. It does just achieve that, forecasted just achieve that at the end of this financial year, 2122. And then in future years, once we reach 2425, that reserve does begin to become depleted, obviously based on not increasing the current precept rate. And I think it's important to emphasise in terms of the risks within these forecasts. Obviously, there are major projects which are coming forward, and we have major plans being developed. At the moment, there aren't financial numbers for many of those projects, and there is expected to be pressure on the town financial projections in future years. And so therefore, careful consideration will need to be given to ensure that there is scope within the Town Account Budget and the town reserves in future years to be able to to be able to move those projects forward and in order to achieve the financial strategy target of a 10% balance, to deal with unavoidable events as and when they arise. And that's it for summary for me. Have any state questions?
Lovely. Thank you very much. Mims, do we get questions on the paper? Council Gross.
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at page 40. It's good to see that silver seats have been increasing over the last couple of years. Any idea where those receipts have been coming from across the town? I don't have that detailed information in front of me, but that can be capital certainly, that information after meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to understand how much those silver seats have been increasing and where across the town those receipts have been coming in from. Just noting WPF 245. That speaks to the fact that civil funding, we have parish inventories, civil funding gets spent at the parish level, because we're not, the wards aren't parish. Civil funding gets distributed across the town. I'm just keen to understand where those receipts are coming in and balance that across, making sure that we need improvements to the environment, to never start, of course, in the whole of Winchester town. And on that, I think that's probably my last question, actually, I hope there was some debate.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have any response to?
So just in terms of clarifying, obviously, the Town Forum manages this neighbourhood portion, which is a 15% contribution of civil within the town area. So therefore, it's comparable to the parish civil contributions which they receive and the town manager, the town receives that. That's the 15% element and makes decisions on how it distributes that funding on projects.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Council here?
Oh, Chair, it's following along from that in a way, and also looking at the growth bid that we're putting in. I think some of us have sort of experience of the difficulty of accessing some of the civil funding at the moment. You know, we've got products in there, but actually turning those project proposals into action on the ground is quite challenging. And similarly, you know, we're putting in bits for growth, which obviously some of it would be immediately drawn into the increased revenue costs of some of our larger projects. But we aspire to do more of the rising ambition for Winchester. Firstly, is, oh, yeah, where will we find the resources to actually steer, guide and translate those aspirations into action? The sort of management leadership resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
And so I think some of that has been top spot in discussion at the Informal Accounts Group and progress is being made in terms of talking with the relevant teams to ensure the right resources are in place. And obviously, there are a number of options within that, some of which may come forward as an increased growth bid. But it's also important to understand what support the existing teams are able to provide within existing resources in order to facilitate moving projects forward and achieving what the town would like to achieve. So I don't think we've reached the stage yet of an actual bid coming forward. It's more moving forward on the understanding of exactly what's already there and how I'd be and I might achieve aspirations when we.
Thank you. Any further questions? Council Ferguson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It relates, I suppose, to the point that was made in your chair's briefing about the potential additional costs we might have to bear as a town forum with regard to the football pitch. When you look at these numbers, Mr. Kennedy, there isn't very much room at all as they exist. And I wondered if you could say anything more about what options we might have as a town forum to raise additional funds, to have additional funding available for me, for additional needs that we may have.
And so obviously, the main sources of funding for the Town Forum are silver seats. So that's obviously one option that will be considered as to both whether that is possible and whether the town would want to progress that route in terms of a source of funding for that. The town reserve, which we have discussed, it does just achieve the 10% balance, so probably it may be a stretch to fund all of it from the town reserve as it currently stands. But that's another option there. The town precept is the main source of funding by far for the town account. And so therefore, raising the precepts is an option which will be considered in January. That could give additional scope, additional baseline scope in order to fund, in order to fund projects on an ongoing basis. And finally, the town historically has, sometimes where the town reserve hasn't been sufficient to support major capital expenditure, it is an option that the town essentially borrows through the district as part of the overall treasury management strategy. And then the town would pay annual contributions to repay that debt and any interest charges that accrue as part of that as well. So there are a number of options within that. Obviously, most of those options do ultimately require additional funding. And so therefore, additional funding is likely to be required to deal with additional growth items that the town's currently facing.
Thank you. Council to the paper.
Thank you. A couple of questions on paragraph 1113, I think, is the sort of bullet points on page 40. So the second bullet point on that page 40 is, there's a budget of £100,000 as we set for 2020-2022 and we're going to be wanting to pay a civil contribution to agreed projects. Is that the project mentioned in the previous page or is that something that's not mentioned elsewhere? So I'm just trying to clarify that point.
In terms of the budget, so we normally set a budget that enables project bids to come forward and be approved as part of the town process. Because if there isn't a budget within the town account, then that would mean that further approval would be required from Cabinet or council, et cetera, in order for those projects and bids to come forward and be approved. So the £100,000 is essentially a reasonable budget set aside to deal with projects that come forward during the year rather than a separate.
Fine. So you've set your projects. Okay. And then the next couple of questions is, increasing the silver seats could be an option to sort of provide that sort of budget anyway. Do we have any sense of what that will actually, how much that potentially be? And the second question is, on the bullet point below that, what facilities are we looking at requiring at North Walls after closure of RPLC? And do you have any sense of how much that will cost as well? It could be quite interesting to know.
Sorry, just to clarify, in terms of being talking about silver seats on the parish precepts, so the increase in.
Sorry, no, it's more a question of, this is a point Bob says, if we increase silver seats over the last couple of years, will enable Town Forum to allocate funding to a range of smaller and larger projects over the next few years? So it's sort of, you know, do you have any idea for what we, how much we propose to get from increased silver seats?
In terms of that paragraph, it's addressing historically that over the last couple of years, silver seats have been increasing, and so there were essentially that, potentially that could continue as an ongoing trend. And so therefore, there is a silver balance there that's able to support both smaller and larger projects. We know that there are significant expenditure requirements, specifically both the pavilions. And obviously, an allocation has already been made to the North Walls Pavilion. So therefore, there is scope within that, and obviously we'll monitor silver receipts and updates on those in terms of exactly what scope that thing would give. Sorry, was there another question?
Yeah, there was just, what facilities do we think are going to be requiring at North Walls after the closure of RPLC? Do you have any idea what that's referring to?
So obviously, there's a budget for the North Walls Pavilion itself, but in terms of any other facilities within the North Walls area, that's, we don't have specific figures for that at the moment. So therefore, that's included in one of the potential growth items that the town's likely to want to consider as that comes forward and as those plans are developed.
Thank you. Council Gross, I think you have one further question? No, shall we move to debate? Anyone have any debates? Council Looney?
Thank you. I do think the Town Forum finds itself in a difficult position at this point in time. We're seeing increasing demands from local people for better facilities in the town. And not only that, but for us to look after our facilities better than we have been. You know, I think we do need to up to the quality of the maintenance. And I don't blame officers at all for these issues. It's about the budgets they have to work with, you know. And we have been cutting out our coats to the cloth we've got. I think it's instructive if we look elsewhere in the district at the larger communities who, like us, offer a considerable range of facilities to their local people. We have Denmead with a precept of £159, Alstford £138, Bishop's Waltham £169. And yet, our precept is £73. So it's not surprising that we're seeing ourselves struggling to some degree financially when we're working in a very different environment. The issue was raised today around the tennis courts, you know, that's 10%, that's our 10% reserve gone in a flash over what's a very small part of the estate that the Town Forum has responsibility for. And we're expanding. We've got new pavilions on the way, which will create new pressures on our finances. We're already responsible for, you know, playing fields at North Walls, at the Garrison Ground, at KGB. We have bridges and all kinds of other things that we need to be paying for as a town. I think, I mean, Council Ferguson questioned the level of reserves earlier. And the other local authorities whose finances I'm very familiar is actually Littleton and Hestock Parish Council, which forms, Hestock is obviously part of St Barnabas Ward, which has much higher levels of reserves than the town does, despite covering a fraction of the population and also having a fraction of the amount of property that it needs to look after. So I think we do need to think very seriously about the level of precept going forward. And it is generally about wanting to offer that better service to local people. I think we're hearing them calling for it, and I think we should think about responding for it. But obviously, that's got to be paid for somewhere. So I do think we really need to have a good look at revising some of the ways in which we're organising our town accounts.
Thank you. Council Gross.
Can you hear me okay? Very good. I'll try and speak briefly in terms of frustration. And it's frustration with myself because I'm not moved on this issue, my issue is really with civil funding and how we are spending it. There's been a red rag to me with 11.13 and the fourth bullet point. In terms of planning underway to understand the consequences by the North Walls off the pleasure of RPLC and additional infrastructure plans to be considered for civil funding allocations. We should be looking at the plan across the town, not just about North Walls. So, and I'm going to raise this point now, or I will talk about it in the next section. Just want to be careful not, because the silver money doesn't all pour into North Walls. We should be spending appropriately across the whole of the town. And that, the point there just makes me raise the flag now rather than have to raise it subsequently. We do need a strategy for spending silver appropriately across the town. And if we're going to invest in North Walls, I'd like to see the money coming from somewhere else, maybe as part of the disposal of RPLC. That should be part of the thinking in terms of RPLC is using funding from that to invest in the replacement of facilities in that area. So when it comes to North Walls investments, I don't just want it to come from silver, it wants to come from other places as well. You know, we've got £12 million sitting in the district fund for silver, which is a whole other issue. If we're going to spend money on North Walls from silver, I'd like to see it spent on infrastructure to get people to do North Walls, to cycle and walking routes across the town. So that any money that is spent on North Walls is to the benefit of the whole town because we make sure people can get to the town. And it's not easy to get to town, to North Walls in terms of cycling or walking. And I don't, I want to make sure that falls into the same trap that we did in the leisure centre, in terms of access to the leisure centre, and thinking about half of us. So as I say, frustration with myself, particularly, you know, in the north west of town, which I assert, which is where most of the silver seats have been coming from in the past years. And it's my responsibility to make sure that there's appropriate infrastructure development in and around where that development is taking place. I think they are making good progress in that space as part of local plan. We have workshops to involve the community to look at the spatial plan for Winchester. And what did strike me during that recent workshop, looking at the spatial plan, is just how much in the north west around St Barnabas Whig, Pegdell, is how little open green space there is. If you look at a. If you look at that, there's very little open green space around that area. So as wall councillor for that area, I want to make sure that we've got appropriate infrastructure to get people into North Walls. And, you know, with Andover Road and the difficulties in getting the speeds reduced, difficulties to get crossings across that Andover Road, increases in people walking and cycling with e-scooters, you know, I saw people on Andover over e-scooters coming along tonight. We need an infrastructure plan to spend money in that space. We'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Christ, I think those were points I made. Any other, any further debates? councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, thank you chair, and thank you councillor Looney and councillor Christ. I was also in the local family too, you talked about councillor Christ, and it struck me that in week, at Teigdell, there is no green space, whereas we need to look at other areas in the town. It was really striking, I went home, took a look at it, because I actually looked at those visual maps. I think I'm really pleased to see in the budget, clearly, that we are actually mentioning Winchester Vision World, that we are looking to allocate grants to those vision delivery, and we actually put this gross bid in, which will perhaps enable that, enable the part of it. It was clear from one of the strands of the vision, the people talked about, you know, what great plans, but you want to see action, you want to come to make that action happen, which is what councillor Looney was saying. And I do agree with councillor Looney, that given the space that what town has to deal with, the facilities that we offer, that we do have to seriously look at increasing our funding levels to allow us to provide what people want. What I would want to be clear on is that if we do look to increase the precept, we link it to specific benefits for the town community, things that people know is going to be spent on, and again, that's across the town area, not just in one area. So those two points, thank you. Thank you very much.
councillor Tippett Cooper?
Yes, I'm going to use the sort of comments councillor Looney, councillor Christ, my sort of template to start with on a little bit, and in terms of councillor Looney says, I agree with, it, on the one hand, it's a positive thing looking at our accounts, that what we get at the town forum, we really put to use, you know, and that's, that's really positive on the one hand. But on the other hand, you know, the rainy day risk is there, and we've got a paper in front for us about sort of costs of the free G pictures, which is that rainy day comes to life. So it does seem sensible, increasing the precept is, is a lot of logic behind that. And picking up on councillor Christ's comments, I mean, although I will defend North Walls The Hills as a, as a sort of, a place that is for the entire city, I, I do see the force of his, his point around, around that. And I think our council plan in the previous paper is referred to as focusing on inequality and disadvantage. And I think where we've got resources at the town forum, we should look into the areas of the city that need it the most in terms of our investments, and spreading it a bit wider is, is certainly sensible if we follow those principles.
Very much. Any further debates? No, we are asked to identify any budget issues to consider further in advance of recommending a town account budget to cabinet in January, and to consider any feedback to cabinet in relation to wider budget consultation. I think there's been quite a lot of debate there that needs to be considered, and I'm sure the town account group will be taking that all on board and providing recommendations for the, I think it's the January, January meeting, I think there's a lot of weight in what, what everyone has said, and it's clearly a very tight balancing act. And I'm completely struck by how amazing the work that we do with money that we have compared to some of the other neighbourhoods and areas in the district. I think that's down to the amazing offices that we have, so thank you all. Can we agree those recommendations? So the next item is a bit of a change of pace, it's a presentation on the Future Fifty work from members of the Heritage Team. I think they are joining us online tonight. Here we go.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello. Louise Dandy.
And I'm very pleased to be here. I'm sorry, unfortunately, I'm without a car this evening, hence the reason why it's virtual, actually. So my name's Louise Dandy, and I'm one of the team leaders for Historic Environment and Urban Design, a role I share with my colleague Rachel White, who some of you may know. And I've been asked to give a general update about the Winchester Future Fifty project, because some of you may not have been aware of it, because actually, it was a pilot project which actually finished in 2020, so just, just prior to lockdown, unfortunately. So this was a project that was focused on producing conservation area guidance and management strategies with the community. And the community in question, we had members of the City of Winchester Trust, we had people from the university, we had students from Winchester College, friends of St Giles Cemetery, the Art College, and also councillors and officers from Winchester City Council. So it was quite a holistic approach. It was a project that was put forward by us in the Historic Environment team, and actually, our application was supported by the town forum, and it gave us additional resources to, to approach Historic England with this idea. And Historic England, like a great deal of the planning thinking, the relevant planning thinking at present, is to encourage community-led decision-making, and for the community to be able to quite easily recognise which, what is special and significant within the conservation areas. And also think about ways that they can be easily recorded, that that information can be shared, often online and, and on a G I S base, and can be used as relevant information to support planning decisions, local plan, policy, et cetera. So the project ran, and as I say, it was a pilot project, and it was focused on two small areas within the Winchester city. It made it easily accessible for officers and councillors, et cetera, to, to, you know, go on site to have a look at these areas. And the areas were a small area of St Giles Hill and a small area of central Winchester. And the idea was to take a themed approach to all the special things that are in conservation areas. So it's not just about the structures, the listed buildings, the scheduled ancient monuments, but it's also about the spaces, the trees, and also the general character of the place. So we, we set up a series of theme surveys, which would look at things such as war memorials and listed buildings and shop fronts and street furniture, et cetera, so that we had a good picture of what our conservation area would look like. And these surveys were helped, we devised these surveys using members of, help working with members of the community to make them easily accessible, so that even if with training and online support or something, it may be possible for the community to take this work forward in other areas. Plan statements or neighbourhood planning. So the whole idea was a collaborative approach to how to help get together a suite of guidance material which would feed back into the planning system, and for people who wanted to access good information to support planning applications and local plan. So we went ahead, and all of, all of that went ahead, and lots of people worked on it. And as I say, we had a great time being trained by Historic England, and the information that was gathered now sits on the W, you know, on Winchester website, under the heading the Winchester Future Fifty. There is a suite of guidance documents about such things as looking after war memorials or buildings of faith. There are also a suite of photographs, because it's very important when you're looking at moments in time for conservation areas, you want to be able to look back on those moments in time. So you have a good photographic record for planning situations or to support planning applications. So the information that is sitting there, it's been used to update our current guidance and also update our webpages. So if you go to the Historic Environment and Urban Design webpages, which is accessible to all, it means that you can have all sorts of guidance about the historic environment and conservation areas. There is also a variety of G I S layers, so map layers, which are again accessible from the public domain, which going on to our Winchester mapping system, you can see all of that information about those particularly, particular pilot areas in Winchester. But as I say, it was a pilot project, and it was funded by Historic England for two years as a part-time project. From there, all the information is being used as evidence for supporting new policy within strategic planning. It also allows, as I say, more robust decision-making, more evidence, but up-to-date relevant evidence. But really, one of the main outcomes is that Historic England saw this as a successful project, it's allowed for the Winchester Conservation Area to come off the National Register of Heritage Risk, and it sits there as a methodology that could be rolled out in other areas of community-led decision-making within the planning context. I hope that helps. I'm open to any questions.
That's fantastic, that Grumps, thank you. Not sure if you'll be able to see everyone on camera, so if we've got questions, I'll let you know who they've come from. Do we have any?
Thank you.
Councillor Tippett Cooper?
Really, really pleased to hear about this, Miss Dandy. It would be really good to have you linked in with the town forum heritage group in due course to hear a bit more about this as well. We'll talk about that separately. I know on the website, there's, there's a new, it talks about a new emerging conservation area management strategy, two pilot areas in St Giles Hill, and also a portion of the Wall Town, it's going to be available in due course. We've had a pandemic and things since this work was done, so I appreciate there's maybe a little bit of an understandable delay in that. But do we know when that's going to be launched?
Sorry, I, I, I really apologise, but it was very difficult to hear you. I'm so sorry. I heard, I heard about that there was on the website, and then you broke up, I'm afraid.
Well, I'll, I'll sum it up. On the website, it says there's a conservation area management strategy for two pilot areas, St Giles Hill and a portion of the Wall Town, that's going to be put on the webpage for public comment in due course. I just wondered if there's any of that.
So, so at the moment, there are some draft suite of documents down the side, so they have been open for public comment. At the moment, I haven't got a timeframe on that, I would have to, I would have to defer and come back to you on that, if that would be possible, because as you say, Covid sort of hit us hard, and actually, quite a lot of the community that we asked to comment, who were actually our gatherers, not all of them have come back to us yet, actually, either.
We're getting nodding from councillor Tippett Cooper. He is the chair of the town forum heritage group, so I'm sure he will be in touch separately.
Very, very happy to help, yeah.
Councillor Todd?
Yes, I have a, a quick question, which was, I think there was going to be a public exhibition about Future Fifty at some point, and it was about two days after Covid started, and I don't think it went ahead. So I just wondered if, now that, well, hopefully we're getting out of it, or now that we're, we're better at running Covid-safe events than we were when we were all locked in our houses, and couldn't run the event before, is there a plan to have a sort of physical exhibition or display to follow up on the work?
We had hoped that, that at the time, we'd arranged with Historic England to actually manage that side of it, and we would attend. And yes, it was all actually organised, and, and literally, on the day was more or less the day when we were locked down. So at the moment, we haven't had any more feedback on that, mainly because Historic England is, is quite, quite at sea, if you imagine, and not doing any public events face-to-face at the moment. So what we did instead was write to all the people who were involved and send them all the information that we had, but at the moment, there isn't any plans to actually have a public meeting, I'm afraid.
That was a done from councillor Todd.
I know.
Are there any further questions? No? Oh, councillor Green.
Yes, thank you.
You might start.
I think I know the answer to this question, I'm the answer anyway. So your group goes around and they look at things, as you said, like the war memorials. Are you then responsible in your group for cleaning them or repairing them, or do you pass that on to somebody else?
So, so we advise on a variety of structures within the historic environment, and actually, the thing about war memorials is a lot of them are put up by public subscription, so many of them don't actually have true ownership, but people take, take, you know, pride in such things, and we're always very happy to give advice. And quite often, I've helped a lot of the parishes fill out application forms to the War Memorials Trust for cleaning and conservation. I mean, it's very dear to my heart, I spent a lot of time looking after war memorials in my past roles. So yes, we're there to give advice, support, and help people through funding applications.
Yeah, councillor Green?
Yeah, because I asked this because I've been through to the war memorials people as well. They, they tell me that it's the council's responsibility to keep the, to upkeep the war memorials in the area. So every time I try to get the one outside the cathedral cleaned, I get, I get knocked back by the council, you know. The Legion, as you know, look after things like this, it's our 100th anniversary this year, it would have been really nice to have that war memorial cleaned before the service was. You know, nobody wants to take responsibility for it.
Right, and I don't actually know who owns the actual one outside the cathedral, to be quite honest, but I'm very happy to chat and see if we can come up with a strategy together for making an application to the War Memorials Trust. Unfortunately, I don't know who owns that one, so it may be that it's, it's within the precinct of the cathedral, and therefore responsibility goes there. So I'm afraid you caught me on the hop, but that doesn't mean that I can't help. So I'd be very happy if you'd like to contact me and we can talk it through.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Don't think there are any further questions, so I'd just like to say thank you very, very much for, for the presentation. Sorry, my mic's cutting out now, as well, and your time... for the presentation. Sorry, my mic's cutting out now as well and your time this evening. Um, and yeah, I, I think we'd like to see what comes of this, this work in the future. So thank you very much.
Lovely. My pleasure. Good night, everybody. Goodbye.
So now we come on to item nine, which is the North Walls Park Plan. We have Susan Croker and Susan Lord here tonight to, to introduce this paper. We also have two members of the public. Um, we have Emma Beck from Salford and Rachel Rimmert on behalf of the Hebsron Isle of Wight Wildlife Trust. Mrs Beck, do you want to go, do you want to go first?
Sure. Well, thank you, Chair. And thanks for giving me the opportunity to comment on the North Walls Park Plan this evening. And we note that the forum's investment in engaging consultants to develop ideas for improving its spaces around the old leisure centre site. This area provides for both formal sporting and recreational activity and informal play. We think it's vital that both are enhanced going forward. The park plan developed by the consultancy is a high-level master plan, so there's not yet colour in all the detail of each zone. It's impossible to tell if the longstanding deficit in multi-use games area provision will be addressed, either as part of the new plaza or the new multi-functional fitness area or within the refurbished play area, although pictures of basketball hoops are conspicuously absent. As you progress the project towards its next phase and develop more detailed proposals, we urge you to please direct the deficit to the South Pacific's children, young people in particular. To recap, multi-use games areas or muggers typically take the form by hybrid basketball and football courts, but may offer basketball hoops only, sometimes with additional elements to allow for wide-ranging informal recreation and play. They're well-used by people of all ages, but it's worth noting that according to the Department of Culture, Media and Sport, football is the most popular sport among British teenagers, followed by basketball. And that's ahead of cricket, rugby and everything else. Participation in both sports is notably diverse in terms of gender and ethnicity. Muggers provide for teens and others to take part in these sports informally, fall free and in the fresh air. In health and social terms, muggers are a slam dunk. The small muggler at North Walls was demolished in 2014 to make way for a larger skate park. At the time, local people were told it would be replaced, but the councils never honoured this commitment. Further muggers have since been demolished by the council in a town area in Westman Road in Week, um, which is one of the few open and green spaces that was in that area, um, referring to Cat's Crust Point. And that was in order to make way for cat's housing, um, and also in Summers Close in Stanmore to create another skate park. The Stanmore Muggler was replaced in 2017, but this and the muggler in KGB in High Cliff, which I believe awaits repair and refurbishment, and are the only such facilities in the whole town area. Where that's a long way from 15-minute distance from the division for Winchester and from the 20-minute walking distance for muggler access specified in the Open Space Sports and Recreation Study carried out for the council prior to Local Plan Part One. In that 2008 study, residents, parish councils, community groups, students and local focus groups all identified a lack of provision for teenagers as a pressing challenge, highlighting the need for more muggers or outdoor courts specifically. Things have got worse, not better, in the town area since then. So please don't miss this opportunity to put things right at North Walls, AKA River Park. It really would be a travesty if the need for this type of facility was overlooked yet again. And we'd be happy to help you as you work out where and how to accommodate it on this site. And Chair, do you mind if I just add a couple of points just reflecting on the other things that have been said this evening? And so just anecdotally, um, it does appear that muggler provision is better in parish areas. Um, for example, and there's a very good muggler at Oliver's Battery with a free tennis court as part of it. Um, there's also a very good muggler and other facilities at Esky Park in Kingsworthy. And my impression is that parish councils do accept still funding and to build those kinds of facilities. I think their need might have been one, um, parish council that applied to district still for a muggler. So I do think that is something that's worth investigating. And then just to go to the point about antisocial behaviour on the sympathetic turf pitch at North Walls. You may have done this already, but I do think it might be worth approaching street reach to see if they might be interested in engaging in detached youth work in that area, particularly if they already run Friday night football, um, activities, um, at the Matthews Fields in Week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If anyone's able to respond to Beck. Mrs Lord.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yes, we, um, informal, um, play is something obviously that we are keen to, to support at, at North Walls Recreation Ground. Um, we did, in the survey, we had over 550 responses, um, asked for people for other things that they wanted. Um, as part of that, they weren't initially in there. Um, we only had three people that actually asked for a muggler on, on that open space. Um, but what came out overwhelmingly was concern about loss of green space and, um, building over it with any kind of hard standing. And what people were specifically asking for was flexible open space that could be used for a variety of purposes. So as a result, in the new park plan, which we're going to discuss in a minute, um, we have put in, um, informal football, football space with a, with a goal area on Devil's Island to, um, meet those, meet those needs as part of that. Um, there are other things that people ask for as well, um, above the muggler, such as, you know, no vote contracts, um, outdoor cinemas. So it is difficult to accommodate all the things people wanted, but we've had to go with the, um, most tiny sort of things, which were the cafe and the, and the toilets.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Todd.
Yeah, I just wondered how many respondents were teenage boys or girls for that matter.
I don't have that exact figure, um, here at this precise time, of course, but I can see.
councillor Tippett Cooper.
Yeah, I, I thought that was an absolutely brilliant contribution, uh, about muggers there. I think there's, there, there, there's so much to be said for them in terms of their universal application. And in, in, I, I understand there's a concern about the impact of the green space, but we would talk, be talking here, I think, about the loss of moan grass potentially if we were to put in the muggler in that sort of area. That's sort of minimal biodiversity benefit, uh, which, you know, I think could be potentially offset by other sort of parts of this park plan. Like, I'm a really, there's a very compelling pitch for a muggler there and I agree with councillor Todd. It really, I suspect the survey we've got slightly skewed in terms of who would actually use it and, um, I suspect the, the teenage users and the younger users of the park could have a lot of benefit from it, as well as the older ones.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs Croker, so I was just going to come back. And yeah, it's, it's, it's very difficult to balance all the needs put onto this small area. And whilst, uh, you're correct that there is areas of unknown, unknown grass, they already have their uses. And the area that potentially, uh, could offer something for a muggler is looking at the cafe, the toilets and the, um, the splash park. So we are very tied to what we can actually deliver at North Walls. Where we can, we do invest. So we have put something in at Westman Road, as it was called, the one, the, the small area that we put in a hoop and a, put a tarp. So that's actually still a bigger part of Matthews Field. And also we have invested in a muggler at Stanmore Rec in, uh, just the last couple of years. So we are very aware of the need and we do where we can and deliver those facilities. But in terms of North Walls, it really didn't come back as a priority. We did try to engage with as many different ranges as we could, and particularly, um, through the skate park. We tried to contact younger people, but it's always going to be very difficult. We have to go on the evidence that came, uh, in front of us. And the muggler was not the high priority compared to other things that people were asking for. But it doesn't mean we don't look at delivering them where we can. councillor Todd, quickly, please.
Yeah, we've had the evidence earlier in the meeting, young people breaking into a sports ground in, in order to play sport and, um, you know, that's not, and that's, I, I've been involved in trying to deal with quote-unquote antisocial behaviour of that kind before. And the, the, they're going to play football. So the question is where and how? And I suppose if we're not going to, if we're not going to, I think we need a muggler plan, put it that way, which is if people aren't finding places to play football in their community, near them or in the centre, then, I mean, they're going to play somewhere. And, and then it'd be described as antisocial behaviour, but it's actually people playing because there's nowhere to play. Um, and I think, I think that's the, that's my concern, that we need to make sure we have a joined-up approach. When we have enough facilities there, and I suspect we'll have a similar discussion about swimming. People are going to swim. They're going to swim. So the question is, how do we manage it? It's not pretending that by not having playing fields and not having muggles and not by, and not having places to access the river, that people are suddenly going to go, oh, well, I, my hobby is, yeah, I'm swimming, I'm not going to do it anymore. I want to play football, but I'm not going to do it anymore. Well, they are going to do it. So what's the plan? Would be my question.
Mrs Croker. Um, they're, they're actually not breaking into play football. They, so, um, they're, they're doing other things. Um, but one of the options, that's why we wanted to put in this, um, more informal, uh, football area, was we, sir? Yes, because we think hopefully that that might allow people to play there. Um, and yes, you're absolutely right. We do need to have a cross-city approach, um, which we do do. But in this particular area, it did not come out as a priority as other things did. And due to the, um, the restriction in area, that's why it wasn't put forward. Um, but you're absolutely right. We need to be looking to improve all our facilities going forward. And this is why, um, we have these plans. The thing about North Walls, it's, it's not received much investment for a very long time because of the issues with the leisure centre. So we're playing catch-up. And we're trying to deliver the best we can. Um, and the solution is, we'll come on to that in a minute. Thank you. Um, Mrs Beck, I think you've, uh, awoken a beast. So I'm sure these discussions will, can, will continue. Thank you very much for coming along tonight and your contributions, eh, as always. Mrs Rimmert, up to speak now.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak and to Susan Lord for liaising with me over the past couple of months. I'm the reserves officer for Hebsron Isle of Wight, while my trusty manager would also say, which is a site of special scientific interest. I want to take, we need to take one thing from what I'm saying here, which is that nature needs to be at the heart of the council's decisions. We recognise that's really important in this week of COP26. We're pleased to see that the park plan includes natural features such as meadow patches, paddling areas and enhancements to the river channels. This is an opportune time to provide people of Winchester with a natural, multipurpose green space. There is a real risk, however, that the council's ambitious proposals will raise expectations and cause harmful impacts on nature and wildlife. The north and east edges of North Walls Recreation Ground fall within the triple-SI impact risk zone. And the trust has significant concerns about potential urbanisation of this area and motion of activities that will impact the integrity of the triple-SI, disturb wildlife and visitors' enjoyment of the nature reserve. In the proposed final plans, the trust has concerns with two items. The paved plaza area would be a loss of public green space and increased noise pollution. A natural alternative such as a wildflower that may stand for the bowling green would remain accessible to all, use habitats for wildlife and provide a playful area. The outdoor gym area in north of the Bowls Club also concerns us. These areas fall within flood risk zone three defined by the Environment Agency. Other location options closer to residential areas and lighting would be safer year-round and less disturbed by flood events. Let's bear in mind, we've had two of those in the last seven years, which ended up with Winall Walls being closed for at least six months on one occasion. The park areas good, sorry, the park ideas are good. It's how and where they are sited that is important for sustainable outcomes. There is a useful rule of thumb. If residents are disturbed by noise and presence of activity, then nature will be too. This means animals will move away from areas of disturbance and no longer be able to live, feed and breed in that habitat area. This would not be deemed an acceptable impact on the triple-SI under environmental impact assessments. What we have to remember is that this park plan is not the only impact Winall Walls is struggling to cope with. There is a Derngate flood alleviation scheme, junction nine of the N3, and increased population with less natural green space available to them. All of this is on the back of widespread habitat loss. This is why you can no longer rely on hearing a cuckoo or haven't seen a water bowl on Winall Walls for the last two years. Nature needs to be a priority and residents want this. In 2013, Winall Walls visitor survey revealed that the top three reasons for visiting the nature reserve were seeing wildlife, gentle exercise and enjoying peace and tranquility. The minimum size for a nature reserve to deliver these benefits is 12 hectares. Winall Walls is 11 hectares. Every outside pressure can shrink this until it becomes dysfunctional. The Lawton Review urges habitats to be better, bigger and more joined up. You cannot push decisions regardless of the environmental impact. This is not what local residents want. It carries a cost we will pay for. Winchester City Council has a legal duty of care to protect designated and protected areas. It's important that the park plan includes options away from the triple-SI impact zone and this will be approved by Natural England. Okay.
Thank you very much. Who's going? Mrs, Mrs Croker. Yes, thank you very much. And yes, uh, we have been in discussions with the Wildlife Trust and we're aware of their concerns. And I come back to the point that we are trying to balance the needs of many different users on this one site. And we will not be taking forward anything that's, um, regardless of the impact on nature. What we will be doing is looking at any impacts of things like the plaza on the triple-SI through an appropriate and risk process. So we're at the very early stages of delivery of this park plan, the idea tonight is to hopefully get approval for it, to, to move into the next phases. But it's important, um, that we do put nature at the heart of what we do. And I believe as a council, we make those decisions all the time. And that's what environmental action plays very much better. And it will be very much part of the consideration that we go forward with this. But we do also have to look at, uh, the needs across the, the city for this very important area. But also, um, we've, you know, the, the area is already utilised to a very large extent with these esports, which is. So we have very little choice as to where we can put these activities. Thank you. And thank you to the three of you for coming along tonight as well. Coming to the paper itself, do we have, if, do you have a presentation that you'd like to, to meet with? Or introduction to the paper?
Thank you. Um, the council report is to deliver the final version of the park plan for North Walls. The park plan has been developed by the consulting team through, um, extensive public consultation. And at the last meeting of the town forum, I gave a presentation on the public feedback on, on the draft version of the plan. The key changes that we've made to the plan since the consultation were revision of the entrance from Park Avenue to a more simple design, inclusion of the permanent cafe and toilets as part of the plaza area, more natural colouring for painting the banana bridge. We've removed the pop-up mini golf and the tower from the plan. The location of the multi-functional fitness space has been changed as Rachel alluded to. Uh, we've included addition of access to the middle river for paddling and for pond dipping activities. And we've also included the playground football area on Devil's Island. The report also proposes that the name of the site is confirmed as River Park. It currently has a number of different identities, um, and it came across at the public consultation that it's more commonly known locally as River Park. So that was suggested that we decided to go with. Um, it also suggested that a park user group is set up to provide input to the successful development and implementation of the park plan. The refurbishment of the play area already has funding approved allocated to that, so we're able to progress on that. And as you mentioned, I've already done further consultation with Sybby School, so that project is moving forward. Adoption of these documents enables progression of the project to the next phase and detailed proposals can then be considered, including funding options. Uh, these include looking at external funding sources and opportunities for income generation. Thank you. You want to answer a question?
Thank you very much. I'm sure we've got lots of questions on this paper. Who would like to start? councillor Green.
Yeah, I've read some review report just a minute ago, and I can't find it now. Um, uh, something about removing the banana bridge. And maybe put them up on it. Did I? Sure did.
We did say about painting it bright yellow.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's what it needs. And if it's a historic bridge, but, um, I don't know, I can understand if people can't get over in the wheelchair necessarily, but surely there's side places at the other end saying not suitable for wheelchairs?
Yeah, it's a key feature of the park. Um, so it's not something we've been planning or changing. We're retaining the bridge, but it would be just painted of all, uh, youthful colour.
Good. Do they have the pictures of it?
Yeah, yeah. We're just like.
Any further questions? councillor Ferguson. Uh, yes, thank you, Chair, and, uh, thank you, Susan, and Susan, the two Susans. Um, I'm really pleased in this that you can talk about the park use group that will speak as often with us in the main hall. And I just wondered if you could say a little bit more about how you envision that, that working? I know this is the next step to come forward to the action plan, but I wonder if you could just translate a little bit more about how you envision that working and how people can get involved? Thank you.
Yeah, so we'd like to set up a forum with key stakeholders involved, so with, um, partners, like at B school, the Wildlife Trust, um, some cricket clubs, key organisations that are involved with the running of the park, um, to help be with officers of the council on a regular basis, uh, basic capital tax a year, just to, to look at how the park is operating and ensure we're continuing to deliver a high quality space, uh, keeping up with some of the concerns people had about maintaining the thing. Councillor, any bits of useful information there about how we can look at ensuring that the staff that will be provided continue to be maintained in a high standard? It also helped to, um, look at some of their, um, issues that are balancing on the site. So, um, different use groups understanding, uh, pressures on the site and how different groups are using it by different ways. And also it will enable more cohesion approach. So some of the groups that don't get involved, like the skate, skate racers and things, enable them to have more of a voice as well.
Thank you. councillor Tippett.
Uh, thank you, Stuart, for that clarification. That's really, really good. And it, it just building on that, I mean, I, as I understand it, these, uh, the final park plan is a number of sort of recommendations for the park. And the, the, the detail of the recommendations necessarily is going to be fine-tuned through that process of sort of very specific consultation with those groups. So for example, the skate park users, um, they'll be sort of involved in the discussion of what their enhancements look like specifically. So although these are recommendations on this paper and we're going to take this forward, the actual specifics of the recommendation, there, there's still some, some fine tuning to be worked out. That's the point I'm making. Question marks, please, sorry.
Yes, absolutely. Um, it shows things like there's a primitive path and it shows where that might be. Uh, what it doesn't show you is what it'd be made of, um, how wide it will be, where there might be markers for running. So things like that part will have to be discussed with, um, visibility groups, with park club, uh, buggy users, et cetera, to make sure that it's fully gone to purpose. Uh, obviously the skate park, uh, we've asked for enhancements to that, so that would be in consultation with the skate park users. So, yeah, these are the, it's like a broad master plan of what we're going to deliver. But, yeah, there will be a lot of ongoing discussion with stakeholders, particularly the Wildlife Trust and the board, and things like that, uh, as we actually move into the delivery phase.
Any further questions? councillor Crokes.
Thank you. Um, just reflecting on this, and public speakers just heard. Um, I'm just wondering about, and this isn't going to be popular, but I'm actually, but just wondering about the scope and the term of reference that we, which you need for them for this. You know, just looking at this chart right now, this plan right now. Um, I'm just looking at the whole orientation, and if I was looking at this from scratch, I'm wondering why they've got two cricket pitches in this plan? And I'm wondering why the cricket pitches are furthest away from the nature reserve? Um, and if we're looking at protecting and supporting that nature reserve, maybe I might put the cricket pitches next to the nature reserve, and I might put hard surface in the middle and health. I'm just wondering how much, if we're trying to do this for two hands or hand type behind our back, if we're giving ourselves the best chance to square the circle, maximise the opportunity of this space. Uh, not popular, I can't imagine, maybe they're really right, but, uh, if it's not said now, then it never will be. But, uh, and has it been thought, given half the park with this, we're going to provide half the park for cricket pitches when football and basketball are more interesting for people?
Uh, Mrs Croker. Um, yes, so thank you for that. One thing that came across very clearly from current users, local residents, is they love the park. They're absolutely adored as it is. And we have been challenged on the amount of, um, changes we already want to do. I think if we were to start from scratch, it would take a lot longer. It would, um, not necessarily be able to deliver, uh, everything that's required. The cricket pitches obviously require certain levelling and, um, uh, area in which to play. I don't believe you could offer that on the Devil Islands bit. And so we've tried to build on what has already been working very effectively rather than rewrite everything. Uh, I can assure you cricket is very popular, um, and the fact that they're not representative because they feel very strongly that their, their wishes have been heard and are part of these plans. Obviously, if members wished us to, to completely overhaul, then we would have to go back and, and do that. But our, our aim was to look at enhancements of what is already a very effective and loved area rather than a complete overhaul. And that, that was the reason we went with the consultations on.
If I can add to that, um, again, I'm speaking as the responsible cabinet member, Rob Woodhurst, as member of the town forum. Um, we have got a budget for eight hundred thousand pounds for a pavilion which is designed to look over two cricket pitches at once, um, in a particular location. And one of the things we've had to do with the park plan is work with what we're already doing elsewhere. It's not just about being able to rewrite everything, but, but we do, we do need to think about where we are now. Um, and there would be a lot more to think about than just moving a cricket pitch. Um, and we have, we have talked about reducing the size of one of those cricket pitches before, and it nearly created a riot. So it's not something we'd like to try and do again.
No, just to say, um, one of the cricket players wanted to be here tonight, but is unfortunately travelling for work. So their absence here tonight doesn't mean that they, they don't care. Uh, sure, as everyone knows, the pavilion project is dear to the, very dear to their hearts. Uh, Mrs Croker. I should have just added as well, Susan's reminded me about, um, uh, uh, requirements as a council to deliver, um, these sorts of sports facilities across the district. And we do have a playing pitch strategy that looks at delivering cricket, and we're certainly not oversubscribed on any of those sports things. So the loss of anything has to be appropriate to the playing pitch strategy, um, as well. Thank you. Um, councillor Green, then councillor Scott.
Good to hear. These, um, pictures, uh, these proposal, uh, page sixty-seven, are these proposed sort of things that you want to do? Oh, I may be existing, I think that was the, I don't understand the, the one down the bottom on the right with the, the latent written across it and light up bird boxes. It's a bit, a bit weird, isn't it?
Um, these were the proposals put forward by the consultants, uh, in the, in the consultation that happened over the summer. And the idea of these pictures were to give an idea to those who were commenting on the types of things they were talking about. I can advise that the latent figures have been rejected, as have the little bird boxes. Um, and so those, those, um, have been now superseded by other ideas coming forward. So now that you're okay.
Page seventy-nine has the current suite of pictures, which again are subject to consultate, further consultation. And they ask, the idea, sorry, Chair, but the, the idea is they give a flavour of what it is. The detail, as, as has been mentioned previously, is yet to be worked up. The, the idea from those pictures was if you give people just the words, they can't really picture it in their heads, but if you give them a picture of something that's been done elsewhere, they can say whether or not they like it or don't like it. So those, those merely illustrative of the kind of things that we could have done rather than the things that we were specifically proposing. councillor Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Um, references to the lady earlier about the wild swimming, uh, situation, watching references, which is, I think, we all sometimes have to take notice of, especially with the flooding, about the, the, of students in our rivers. And you may not be able to answer this tonight, but it's worth noting what is our quality of our river reserves all the time. And is, does southern water need to be sort of coming to some of the discussions? If our quality of our water is not being appropriately levelled, forbidden to pass through in, in, in the city, you know, we've, we've maybe mentioned earlier, to now with the, uh, Northwall's park. So do we know, do we have any, the agents with southern water that across the water?
Uh, what we do is work with partner agencies who provide us information to the Environment Agency, would be able to, um, provide us with the details of the water quality. We also work within, uh, water partnerships across the district to look at how to manage and enhance our rivers and water systems. It is a very important aspect, um, of the natural environment, and it's one that's certainly in the headlines at the moment because the issues are coming through. Um, so on this specific project, it's not something that we're, we're specifically looking at other than with the access to the river. We have to be very mindful of that, so we will have to make sure that the river is appropriate to the access in terms of children and the paddling. Um, at the moment, I guess people are choosing if they wish to go into a river or not and can see the information before they go, or see the, which we'd be sensible. Thank you. Any further, councillor Todd?
Um, thank you. Um, and in terms of the report, I would definitely be interested in understanding the demographics of response, um, because we know that we tend to skew towards middle-aged, middle-class people in our consultations, and I think we need to actively watch that we don't bias too far in that direction because that isn't everybody in the city. I've got a question. I suppose you made a good point earlier about cricket pitches and looking strategically across the district. And I suppose where we started to come out of the mugger conversation was actually saying, looking strategically across the city, where do we need this kind of informal football capacity? And then I, I would differ with you, by the way, in terms of the, the use of the space because it's certainly not everybody's, you know, there is quite a lot of people playing there, but anyway, we can discuss that separately. Um, I'm very interested in the work that's been done by the Hampshire Wild Wildlife Trust in Oxford as part of the Water Crescent Winter Bours project, which is all about giving people structured access to the river, and dogs instead as well, and people, access to the river without silt damage, without bank damage, you know, without silt being kicked up and the problems that that causes for the river. And recognising that if you give people a way of accessing things in a way that won't be environmentally damaging, it makes it easier to restrict their access in other, in other places and other ways. So I suppose that's also a strategic question, which is, we need a plan for people to access the river. You know, if you look at the history of the city, um, in, obviously there used to be not wild swimming, but open air swimming at Bulldrove. Um, the, the college had its own open air swimming pool, still does actually, although it's still a garden. Um, uh, you know, and people swam in the river, and that was, that's what people do. And it's what people did during lockdown, and it's what goes a, a number of people. So the, the question for me is not, you know, we can argue about what happens at Northwolds, although the impression of the papers are precluding it. Um, but we need a plan because people are going to do it. And so how do we do it in a way that isn't damaging to the environment, isn't damaging to water quality, isn't damaging to river banks, but lets people do what they're going to do anyway, um, in a way that isn't damaging? And I suppose that also to a degree, it may not be within, maybe we need to start two more work groups looking at muggles and water access, but we need to answer those two questions. And I suppose that comes back to a point and a question about this, which is fine if you look at it within the space, but if there are strategic needs for the city that aren't being met, like water access, and, and we preclude it in this space, are we actually precluding our ability to fulfil a district or city need that may not be what people respond to, um, when we ask about this space, but it's still a need within the city?
Mrs Croker, thank you. Yes, we're not actually precluding, um, swimming at Northwolds. We're also not necessarily going out and encouraging it. It's a very fine line that we're, we're trying to achieve here. Um, we are in discussions with the Wildlife Trust about what we can do to support them in the management of the nature reserve and things like signage, like please, you know, enter and exit from this side, don't exit from the, from the other side, that sort of thing. I think this could be a good test case for us to see how we can manage the, the desires to swim versus the other implications that can have. And I'm sure there's a lot to be learnt for what we can do going forward at Northwolds. Across the district, there are some very, um, well-known sites that are utilised, uh, a lot by, by swimmers. And I think it's an area that all, um, local authorities will be looking at going forward due to the, the value that it's proven to have over the last couple of years. Whether that demand continues, whether the desire still continues is yet to be seen. But we can certainly look at something, I think, for one, for this about where your priorities are as a town forum, and where you want us to put our efforts. Um, that the, the whole line of this, this, this focus on Northwolds and to, to really invest in that area that's required it, but this is certainly more work that we could do. And the mugger and looking at that opportunity across the district is something that we're, we're working through anyway. We can do that. We don't have a strategic approach to it, and we could look at that. So, you know, members are happy to be guided by you as to how you want us to prioritise going forward, and if there's any areas that you wish us to go, then we can certainly do that. But for this side, we're not precluding it, we're not putting in a big swimming platform and a diving board and changing rooms. We had all sorts of, you know, changing rooms and, and, you know, all sorts of things put forward as, as a possibility. And a lot of people are very, very keen on the, the open. councillor Redcliffe.
Thank you. Just to pick up on a point that was made at, at an earlier stage, that, um, there are other spots where it is possible, has been possible in the past, uh, to swim, to, to engage in wild swimming. One of them, not so much wild swimming, but at least river swimming, uh, is, uh, I understand in the ownership of Winchester College. And I just wondered if the council officers had had any discussions with the college or whether we as councillors could help facilitate any discussion? The college, as I understand it, has a river pool which has fallen into disuse. The college enjoys its charitable status and has, uh, some responsibilities towards the wider community and giving access to its facilities for community benefit, and that could be something that we could explore in the future.
I think I had my first volunteer fly river swimming working group. Uh, but that does sound like something that that working group can look at those, facilitate those discussions with, with the college, looking at options like has been done at Oxford as well, but I'll let Mrs Croker come back as well. In short, no, we haven't had discussions. Uh, we could, definitely. Uh, and we have been involved in other projects in the past, like with the issue of our access to rivers and things. So we, we're aware of the need for it, but yes, we could, we could open it. But if there's going to be a formal group looking at topic areas, then we can send you that. Thank you. councillor Todd.
Yeah, I should say, I did have a meeting with the college last week where I was talking about other issues. And at the end, we started talking about the question of, we, we did talk about water and access to, the name of the college, uh, Bullers, Gunners, Hall, apparently for those interested in such things. Um, but, uh, I'm sure they would be interested, and I think they're facing many of the same pressures that we are, this balance between river damage, uh, and access and how that is managed. So I suspect it may be one where if we get all the stakeholders who might be open to discussion about river access in a room and have a proper discussion, we might be able to come up with something.
Hi, councillor Westwood, then councillor Tippett.
Lady Chair, yes, I just want to really support what councillor Todd has been saying in terms of looking at this more broadly, because it very clearly is. Thank you chair. Yes, I just want to really support what councillor Todd has been saying in terms of looking at this more broadly, because there very clearly is the demand that is not being met across the city. And the point councillor Todd, I think the demographic, I think is important, so we should understand whether there is a gap in information you have collected at this point, and if there is, we should review in that light. So we'll see that taking place.
Yeah, thank you. We do try to make our engagement events as open and inclusive as we can. It's always very difficult to reach certain groups, and when we can, we then go and target those groups specifically, like with the schools and the play area and that sort of thing. As a strategy, yes, that's, of course, that's fine. We can.
Councillor Tippicooper.
Thanks very much, Chair. The question, and I will apologize to councillor Becker already if this was going to be one of your questions, I know this is a bit, but but it's a question around when we are undergoing a sort of the specific consultation processes with group users, are we going to be able to include specific external groups that may be able to add a lot of value? And I'm thinking, for example, of making space for girls, the campaign group that's looking to create better spaces for girls in particular, something's come up in previous meetings, and councillor Becker is very passionate about, I know. And whether there's scope to do that, so that when we are doing these enhancements and improvements to the play parks in particular, whether we can get their input about what might work to ensure we've got a, an inclusive play spaces in that respect.
Thank you. That's a wonderful suggestion. And anything like that, then please do feedback to the formal group that, that we have in the town forum or to officers directly. As we go forward to the delivery, we're, we're very happy to talk to as many groups as we can that will add value, as you say, and really make sure that these spaces that we provide are the best that we can do within our abilities. We did convene a group when we were doing the vision work that was specifically teenage girls, so we may look to, to reconvene that group who had already engaged with the council on proposals for the city. I know councillor Crest was involved in the, in the establishment of that, so perhaps we can, we can talk to them again. Mrs Remnant, we normally don't allow. Do you have a question or do you have a point or clarification to make?
It was an answer about the swimming, if that was possible.
I think that would be appropriate, given, given your role.
So we have a wild swimming site, if anybody would like to have a look at that, that is on our website. We recognize the benefits of outdoor swimming. I'm an outdoor swimmer, a person who would no longer go to River Park because I'm a person, you have to sort of deal with the consequences of that. And I agree with the sentence here that provision needs to be made in a place that can cope with that activity. And we had several quite serious incidences over the summer where we just could not move large groups of children off the nature reserve, we could not dissuade adults from swimming areas where it was having a very dire impact. And if those people have somewhere designated to go, it makes it much easier to say, I'm really sorry, you need to go down there. So Susan Croker, Susan Lord, we're having a topographical survey conducted at North Walls across the nature reserve, and what we want to do is work with the council on their channels as well to look at what enhancements can be made on those river channels that might then bring benefits for water access. And I think, yeah, disagree, that there needs to be somewhere where people go. And I'm not only managing North Walls, I manage St Fosmeadows and St Crossmeadows, and that's also had those same issues. Thank you. Through the couple, thank you.
Are there any further questions for the way to move to debate? Councillor Ferguson, sneaking on in at the end.
I'm sorry, I just wondered, Susan, whether you could say, Susan Lord, you could say a bit more about the consultation that has gone on prior to this plan, because it's the show on two sets of consultation, one was in council and one was online. I just wondered if you could just say a bit more probably at the town forum, particularly for the new councillors about what's been done, I know it's in the report, and I think you can.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, back in March 2018, we had two days' worth of consultation on-site at North Walls. So we had over 830 people come to those events. They were of all ages, so we had specific sections of the marquee that were specifically for the young people and for the skate rangers, and we had specific questionnaires for the children to fill in that were aimed at them. We also had activities going on on the open space run by our sports development team, so that there were the things to encourage them to attend and to come along. So we did have people participate of all ages in that event. And then the consultation which we've done recently was actually run by the consultants. So they set the questionnaires and the question, the information that was going for that, but we had done 550 responses to that survey as well. I don't think they collected an entire demographic approach like we did in the initial consultation. We collected information from all different groups to say what they did on the site, which parts of the site they used, where they came from, what activities they were doing, and the demographic information, that was all collected as part of that. But the consultants only, I think they only consulted on where people came from to use the site. But so, yeah, in total, over those, yeah, 830 plus in the first one and 550 at this one. And as I said, with certain consultations that are going forward, obviously, I'm now consulting every single child, it's a big school park from here, oh, sorry, that was a teacher's decision, about what, what they'd like to see in the play area. And we are engaging with the illegal users of the ATP as well, who told us, say, that they would like a goal on the open space, so that's where that's come from. So yeah, and obviously, we have our own skate rangers and skate park users, and it's not my favorite group for that.
Thank you. So we'll move to debates. Do we have any debate on this paper? Councillor Lenny.
Thank you, Chair. I am delighted that we are bringing this forward today. While the covering report might have my name on it, I think it's really important to say that this park plan is very much a joint effort with the town forum, the Natural Environment and Recreation Team, and the local community. This has all come out of those consultation events, the things that people have told us. I think we tended to concentrate a bit this evening on what isn't in the plan as opposed to, to what is. So we've got a half series of fabulous ideas to really make a step change in our park without losing the things that people think are really important. It is around that balance between nature and enabling people to be active in all kinds of different ways. What we want to see here is a lot of people being active. And I think we should celebrate the fact that we're going to be giving people new opportunities, a splash park, better and appropriate river access, and giving the other parts of the park a real spruce up and making people able to feel really proud of the park. We've waited a long time for things like the play area refurbishment, because we have been in a bit of a wait and see, let's go through all these processes mode. And I think I'm certainly really looking forward to some exciting ideas coming forward for that. So putting a bit of pressure on you there, Susan. But this is a step change, and I think we need to be clear that we should be celebrating it.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Tippicooper.
I'd just also say that just really commend the astonishingly hard work of the officers to kind of produce this and get to this position we're in. And I know the officers that were once here tonight really are passionate about the park, and that passion shines through in the work they've done here. And it's something, this is an example of where consultation has really worked as well. You know, the, the tyranny of the tower has been defeated by popular public opinion. The banana group is not going to be yellow, because people said we don't want it yellow. So the town, the town forum has listened and it has responded, and it will really, from tonight's Art as a Law show, will continue to listen to work out the finer details. And it was really positive that Hampshire Wildlife Trust was saying, there was, there was commending a lot of the other parts of the plan. Still, there's public concerns, but, you know, with further consultation work, which the officers here have really shown that they're open to, it, it sounds like there's going to be some progress made there. There really is something for everyone in this park plan. And, you know, parents are going to be absolutely delighted about the water play features that are there. If they can be done in a sustainable and way as well, that's going to be really important. But again, fine detail that can come through the consultations. And, you know, all users are going to benefit from these changes. And so hu- huge credit to you all and looking forward to seeing it go through to the next, next phases.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll be, I'll be brief. I also wanted to thank officers for the immense amount of hard work that they've put into this. I know the analysis is detailed, a very forensically accurate of all the consultation responses, so nothing is lost, was done with great effort, and we really like to thank you for that. I know people love the park, I mean, I love the park. I've been here for 23 years and I'm scared for it, if not day, like a lot of councillors, and I'm certainly there two or three times a week. And while people said they loved the park, they're also pretty clear that they did want to see some enhancements, some improvement. The fact that we have this splash park plaza area as a really popular option is because we obviously did engage, and we did engage people with younger children, and that has in the past, we didn't talk about that today, but then actually felt there was a deficit for things for children to do beyond, beyond our park. In fact, when I was in the park, I mean, last weekend, there was a post, and there were three children just running around and around and around and around it, because there was a post. So surely they absolutely, absolutely loved the water play, acknowledging, of course, that there are still details to be ironed down. So I'm excited and I really hope that the town forum will endorse this paper and recommend that we go forward to the next stage of planning exactly how we're going to do it and getting it on doing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate?
No. I would just like to echo what councillors Lenny Tippicooper and Ferguson have said. I am so, so pleased to see this paper come to us tonight. I know how much work you both have put in over and above what you expected to put in to its preparation. I know how much the park is loved by, by the public. It was interesting when we first started discussing this with the public, that basically they said, no, 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 we love the park, please don't change it. I think we have managed to elicit from them the, the things that they would like to see changed, and I think we've also gained their trust that we're not going to be messing with what makes it so special and what makes it special to them, because I think everyone uses the park in, in different ways. This also recognizes that the park has been neglected, frankly, for, for too long, and this is the first major improvement work that it will have seen for a very, very long time. As you know, I have two young children, so I'm particularly keen on seeing the changes to the play park, but also the introduction, the introduction of really fun elements. I think fun is something that we fail to discuss a lot as a town forum. We talk about, we talk about fitness and we talk about wellbeing, but for children and adults, the sense of fun is really important, and I think that's an element that we're really injecting through this park there. With the splash area, I want to play in the splash area. I'm sure I'll be dragging my children along to it, because I want to play in it, I want to pedal in the water, I want to do different with my children, and we're offering opportunities that we haven't had before. So I really want to thank you for, for that and really, really look forward to working with you on the implementation of the plan. So having said all that, can we move to the recommendations which are to adopt, adopt the park plan and authorize the development of the proposals to the implementation stage? That agreed?
That's already agreed.
Thank you. And thank you both again, and thank you for your contributions tonight as well. They are very, very valued, and we will be continuing to work very closely with you. I think you've already been invited to be part of the implementation group. Yeah. Fantastic. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs Beck, as well. We will, I think you've heard, there is a definite eagerness to take forward your ideas and to look at the, the need for, for muggers across, across the town area. But that, that brings us to the verbal updates from the informal groups. Now, I was already heard tonight from effectively the accounts group, the grants group, and the North Walls group, so that leaves at my count, the heritage group, the planning group, and the KGV group. And I'd also just like to give a very quick update on the pavilion project, if that's appropriate, which is just to say that architects had now been appointed for the pavilion project to draw up revised drawings and plans for the pavilion. We do expect that those plans will be provided in the coming weeks. So there will be a more fulsome update at the January town forum meeting, but members of the public and members should be assured that that project is continuing to, to move forward. Councillor Tippicooper, sorry, you caught my eye. Do you want to provide an update from the heritage group?
Thank you very much. Councillor, that will go very quickly. So just the last group meeting we had last week, and in that, we were very grateful to have the attendance of representatives of Hyde 900 and other heritage groups in Hyde, and they sort of updated us on a surveying event they held for the King Alfred Weekend in Hyde Gate. And that surveying event essentially brought back information for the public about how they would like to see Hyde Gate restored, enhanced, improved, and it was very, very positive in the sense that that is certainly a consistent desire with what the heritage group wants to do. And please to say that the pigeon proofing works on Hyde Gate are progressing, and they started this week, in fact. So once, that's a very important first step, once that space is clean of pigeon excrement, everything else can start to happen. Following that, we were also getting costs prepared for restoration works on Hyde Gate and several other sites across town, which I discussed at the last meeting. That also includes the cost of restoration work to the Buttercross, which is a real priority for the heritage group, and there was a lot of discussion about how we could do that. Was also some concern raised about, suppose, the the time that it takes Heritage England to give requisite approvals in relation to those works. And I think there's a real strong, firm desire, but a lot of pressure, the council took a lot of pressure on Heritage England to sort of really, you know, up the urgency of making sure that our heritage sites are preserved and protected. There are approvals that need to be sought from Heritage England before we do certain works. It took a very long time to get pigeon proofing approved, and it was, it was the delay at Heritage England's end. We want to really work with them to make our heritage site fantastic, but equally, we've got to work with them, we want them to work at the pace we want to work at. So I think the heritage group, one of our key, key goals will be to really drive forward progress there and encourage Heritage England to come along with us.
Thank you very much. The, the planning group, Councillor Crest, did you want to provide an update on some of the planning measures and planning? There have been quite a few planning meetings that have been taking place.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Sure, you can. You're right, there's been a number of planning workshops which were described to us by Andrew Fox at the last town forum meeting. The first of those was on October the 20th at the Discovery Centre in town. There were some 40 people attended there in person. It was by invitation to people with expertise on planning policy. The people attended were architects, developers, representatives from the City Retsford Trust, WINEC, plus a number of councillors and cross, cross-party from the Fosdham district. I think it was extraordinary events that actually looked at the local plan, looked at which policies were deemed weak, which ones were deemed missing, and which ones could be kept but needed to be preserved. So there was an afternoon workshop, very engaging. So there's an afternoon workshop, very engaging. And I think the planning offices took a lot of information away from expertise. So it's a real demonstration of something I think we've been crying out for, is for the council to engage with experts to get their input. I think the local community and the local experts were very willing and welcoming of the opportunity to do it. So a lot of information, I think, is going to help the planning offices develop that local plan to make sure that the policy is fit for what we need in the town. There was their second workshop on November 5th. It was two two-hour sessions that was more open to the general public, including also architects and developers. The session in the afternoon was attended by some 40 people. Again, very engaging. The number of councillors I can see around the table at that meeting. And that was more of a spatial plan. It was more, it was less technical. It was more visual. We had maps of Winchester and we looked at which buildings, which areas we could imagine being repurposed, the cars being built, buildings that could have a better use. Plus, also then looking at connectivity, tourist activity, looking at how people move or how people move through the city. So there was a great focus on cycling paths, walking routes. And so many passionate things that turned up. It really spoke about Winchester the future and how cars are not going to be part of the future. It's early, it's about walking and cycling. And how Winchester is just not set up for the future. It's full of car parks, the city over car parks, all this ordinary private car parks. It's just incredible how many private car parks there are across the town. And we actually look at a map and just plot how many car parks there are across the town. And then how many green spaces there are. It's quite extraordinary to actually do that exercise. And so I've lived here for many years, but actually having that guided activity across a map is quite an extraordinary experience. There is a third one on 16th of November at Muller Hotel, which is more designed for the market towns and the rural areas. So that gives that same opportunity that the rural community have been looking for. I think very much inspired by what we've done with the vision for Winchester, which obviously was focused on the town. So really extending that opportunity across the district and including the whole of the district area. I think Chair does speak to some things that you and I, the planning team, will be working on in terms of what's next. And I would suggest that, you know, I think it's a good exercise. We can, you know, take it another level down, really looking at ward by ward. You know, what are the areas in each ward that would be appropriate for development? And how we would want each ward to be developed? And how we would want connectivity within wards and between wards? Which is very interesting to look at how Winchester has evolved, how, for example, Oliver's Battery was conceived and developed, how you've got Oliver's Battery Road, which creates an island effectively. But then there's very little connectivity from Oliver's Battery into Winchester. You're almost expecting the drive from Oliver's Battery to Winchester. So it's a very thought-provoking actions that I think we need to take a look at in terms of how we do create a local plan that gives us that vision that we're looking for through 2013. It's not just about how people engage and are engaged. It's also just about how that's the development station, so it's step forward future.
Thank you. And I have to say that first session, I didn't understand the second session, but the first session was incredibly engaging and really interesting to hear the views of developers and architects and officers in how they use the local plan. I'm really sorry, I forgot the High Street group. So I'll do the KGV group first and then move to the High Street group. Councillor Lenny.
Thank you, Chair. So the KGV pavilion, we have a planning application submitted for the proposed pavilion at KGV. The consultation will be open until the end of December. I think it's anticipated this will go to planning committee before the end of the year. But time is critical. We've got some significant external funding. And the process of submitting the grant application, we have a deadline in January. The time is tight on the pavilion. The funding that we are expecting to put into this will need to go into capital structure through February. So a lot's lined up, ready to go on this pavilion, subject to getting the planning permission later this year. We're looking at a business plan for running the pitches with key users. That's the Hampshire Football and Cricket Federation foundations. And we're looking at putting up a licence to run these pitches, which would provide a guaranteed income from it. On the skate park refurbishment, there was a successful public meeting with a design consultant, Maverick, who was skate park specialist. And there'll be a follow-up meeting to review the designs that they're bringing forward on 16th of November. And we've been informed that there's some additional third-party funding available for that skate park between the potential council and the land. On the overall park plan, offices have prepared a detailed timeline for completing the other works that we've been looking at around the park plan. And we have a budget proposal of around £200,000 for delivering that side of the scheme. So the challenge will be for us to find that funding. And I think we'll be looking at putting a still there in different areas, of course.
Fantastic. Sounds like you're making amazing progress. I'm sorry, the centre of city, what is it? City centre group. Councillor Edwards.
Yes, I don't know. I'm very bored to make it this day and again, meeting very soon.
Thank you. And just a reminder, or call for volunteers, actually, if anyone would like to be on a working group for outdoor swimming. Show of hands, please. Thank you both. I think the three of us is plenty. That's brilliant. Thank you. So for the record, that was councillor Todd, councillor Tippett Cooper. So the final item on the agenda, as always, is just to approve the work programme for 2021, 2022. The next meeting we have scheduled is for the 27th of January, which will be, which only had two items at the moment, but one of those is the town account budget, which, as we've all heard tonight, will be quite a chunky discussion, I think. So can that be agreed? Councillor Todd.
I don't think there's a sufficient timing on it. But one of the things I've seen done on other forward plans is you have things where, you know, you want to talk about them, but you haven't quite worked out when yet. And I would suggest mud and confusion. I mean, we're certainly up a sub period to look at water and that's great. But I think mud and confusion is something where it would just be useful to have that discussion. I will have to agree with officers when it's possible to have a response more than just writing it on, see what happens.
I think we have had items in the Future 50. It's one of those items that has been sort of rolling for months now when we had space. So, and when they were able to give the update. So I think that's something that we can add in as a, to be confirmed with a date. But once it's on the list, then there is that urgency to get it done. So that's a good idea, no shit. Can that be agreed? Councillor Crass.
Chair, are we adding vision for Winchester? I think if I look at the middle of the state, it must be one of the other actions that we needed. So if you could do that and where has actually been.
No, I agree. So I think we can add in as another item to be confirmed for the dates. But we do, you're right, we do need to keep the urgency on that. So with that, I think we're adjourned. Thank you all for your contributions this evening. And see you all shortly.